Glad to see everyone here tonight. It appears to be a short agenda, but we did say we would discuss the road paving as one of the main issues tonight rather than have a separate work session. We do have a lot of expertise here tonight, so I think we have a short presentation and then we can ask questions that might help us clarify what we're actually looking for in our resolution. I think we're all agreed that we need to stick to the plan and that we need to allocate some funds to start moving forward, but that's as far as we got. And we put the resolution back on its original form.
I want you all to forward the agenda to me.
And I think all of y'all over the seventh or so received a full copy of the plan from Mr. Stewart, so you've had about a week if you needed to go over it.
I got you, Terry. Where are you going, Steve? I don't know.
I need more. The road is over.
Okay, everybody situated? All right? Thank you.
Kenny, glad to be back here. I put it off my hand out that I brought last year the whole overview. But I understand that you've got a little bit of money issues right now. I went ahead and flipped ahead to the last two pages. That's where we start coming with some money. The page is over right here, the crack ceiling cycle. This is a six-year cycle that will repeat itself to have Frank, some of the crews, we have to spend about three weeks sealing cracks by hand each year during about, I think, nineteen miles, kind of our broker part, and that way you cover the city in about six years. That's a pretty cheap operation relative to being actually, I'm looking probably at about twelve thousand dollars a year, but that's something we want to repeat year after year after year and, you know, keep the roads, cracks sealed up in the roads. The next page, the last page, is kind of actually the twelve-year plan of where to contract out maintenance. And what I propose here is in years two, doing some type of sealing operation, a chip seal or fog seal. Year four, doing micro-surfacing, which is a different type of maintenance that adds a little bit of thickness to the pavement. And then year six and year twelve, doing an actual complex overlay, which what we've been doing, that's the most expensive type of maintenance. So you kind of get the least bang for your buck, the more expensive you go. So the sealing type of maintenance is better preventative maintenance. When we did this a year ago, or a little over a year ago, we set up two different plans, I guess, based on what type of budget we think you guys could put out there, based on a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year or two hundred thousand dollars a year. And with those two amounts, you can see, over the twelve-year cycle, we would maintain about twenty-one miles or twenty-seven miles. So that kind of lets you see about a little bit of the difference if you add a fifty thousand dollars or more over the course of twelve-year plan, what that does. So I think at this point, I guess you guys are looking to actually dedicate a line item amount. So I don't know. These are the two dollar amounts that we set up. If you guys are thinking it's going to be a different dollar amount, then it'd probably be good to go back and revise this plan a little bit, but these would be the two starting points we had back in twenty-seventeen.
So clarify, the first two years of the plan, what is actually recommended total dollar-wise and effort?
I would recommend two hundred thousand per year.
Per year?
Per year. And so the amount that's not spent in year one rolls over to year two, where you can have a good-sized contract, keep good competitive bids.
Okay. Now, going back.
That's why, I mean, knowing that with the rollover and everything, that's why I just went ahead and pushed it to two hundred grand. And that way, if we decided to go with the one-fifty, it was at least in the pot, so I just went ahead and pushed it to two hundred, just so we could have the proper discussion on it.
So total, the confusion last time, I think, was some over, you're not just recommending sealing cracks in the first couple of years?
Correct. That's just one part of the plan.
Okay.
Yes.
And any comments from our fearless leader at department head level?
Yeah, what's different from the, from the plan that we had about two years ago that we used as, from the fund that we used when we kind of went around to each district? And Darren, I think you remember that.
Yeah, the previous pay-
What were your contracts? Yeah, what is, what is different about this particular plan?
Well, I think this- This has a longer range outlook, right? We're looking at twelve years.
That's right.
And the other big thing of this is that we went out and scored all the roads, right?
We did.
So we, we, we got out and walked many, many samples of your roadway and scored. So that way we can identify which roads, you know, are the lower-scoring roads that need more significant rehab versus those roads that are maybe in decent condition that need more of a preventative maintenance to keep them in a good condition.
But we checked on those roads. I mean, we, we went back in each district, I know each council person, and then went around and rolled videos, as a matter of fact, and we designated some of those, some of those areas that needed more pavement.
When we did that project a few years ago, we didn't look at the entire city and assess all of the roadways of the city at that time.
Even though we did each, each district?
That's correct. We had, we had some selected roads in each district that we were asked to look at, but we didn't do a full-scale analysis over all of the city streets as we did in this four recent street.
But this plan does include a full scale?
Yeah, this, this plan, we walked every street.
Okay. So each year, these funds would be designated from our gas and, from our gas fund, gas tax fund, each year we designate twenty thousand dollars to kind of master this plan or kind of build on this plan that we have right here. How much did we, how much was it last time that we did?
I think it was seventy thousand.
Seventy five thousand times five.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. But how many years ago was that?
Three.
Four?
Three.
Fifteen or sixteen?
Yeah, that was with the old council, the twenty-twelve council. So it was somewhere between fourteen, fifteen, twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen.
You sound about right, about twenty-fifteen.
About fifteen.
But I think the key here, so we've identified them out, the key is to stick to the plan and basically take the roads in the order of, I guess, need based on where they fall within the city, no matter what district.
Correct, yeah. And the, the road that I selected out here, you know, they're, they're kind of grouped in close proximity, so you can get good competitive bids, you're not, you're not having a contractor hop all over the city, and also you're not disturbing citizens all over the city, you know, here.
And Frank, from your standpoint, this would involve a bid process for the major work, which y'all would be doing, the crack work, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. But that has to be done first, no matter what?
Yes, it'll, it'll be done all twelve years, and then two, four, six, eight, and twelve is, they're doing some-
Have a contract.
Yeah. You know, overlaying different types of service.
How would this be contracted out?
Bid. We'll bid it. We'll list the, the roads that's in this, each year, we'll list those and bid them out.
So basically, if we allocate two hundred thousand for year one, twelve thousand, five hundred of that approximately would go for crack work.
Yes.
And the others would be bid out for the other work defined in the plan, for the specific streets defined in the plan for year one, the worst, I guess-
Year two.
Year two.
Yeah, the balance will roll forward to year two, and in year two, out of contract, it'll be, say, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever.
So we're actually approving for two years?
And I think that's what we touched on, was because that will tie up our term, and then, so basically, whatever councils here at that time, two years from now, can just do whatever they want.
And then the question became, do we approve one year to get started, then next year approve or whatever, so?
Yeah, the carryover does kind of commit us to a two-year commitment, for lack of a better term.
Well, I'm gonna be very consistent, you know, I don't like long-term contracts, so I can, I can only, for myself, I can only say I'm good with two years, basically.
Well, actually, we're not even two years now, so?
Right.
Okay. Now, are you any comments? Let's start over your way.
No, it seems pretty straightforward that if you want to follow the plan, so you're really only, you're really only voting on one year, and then this time next year, you will vote on, to continue it, I assume, which will then give you the whatever's left over, the hundred and seventy-five thousand left over from this year, plus a couple hundred thousand next year, so it's gonna give you three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as he says, to do a contract for next year, to do more paving, more, more pavement. So it's pretty straightforward once you look at it.
Okay. As far as any questions?
No.
And you feel comfortable with it as it is? And this is basically, but we're dealing with year one?
I understand.
Okay.
So, I mean, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, I know we're only really voting on, on one year, but the line item being two hundred thousand, we understand, like the mayor's saying, we're rolling money over to next year with the understanding we'll probably have to vote on that in order to move forward with the contracting process.
You would not anticipate spending, what, twelve thousand, five hundred of what is this year, but then at the beginning of next year-
Right.
-you will spend what's left over from this year, plus what you've added to it.
So we're just essentially earmarking-
Earmarking funds.
Twelve, five, less two hundred for next year's, from the gas tax. Exactly, from the gas tax.
The only other thing I would say, the pressure on you all is gonna be, when that resident comes up to you and says, you know, I come out and do a street paved in my district, and you're gonna have to be firm and resolve and say, we have a plan, we're gonna get around the whole city, and it will, it will come through your neighborhood if we want, for the point that is.
Who's determining as far as what streets are then improvised? I saw the plan, so you're going strictly by the plan this year?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And there've been some adjustments in there, because there are a couple of roads to, the mayor got the county roads agreement that we actually got the county to take, so there's a few roads in here where we can move around a little bit.
Okay. All right. But the key is to stick with the plan.
Right.
Councilor, any questions?
Yeah, I'm looking at page seventeen of the paperwork that you sent us a few weeks ago, and it lists all the roads and when they'll be done. Is, I'm looking at, at the total at the end of the first year, it says eighteen point six-six-five-three. What does, what does that tell, what's that trying to tell me? God dang this thing. And then I look at year two, and it's nineteen point four oh four-six. What is, what are these figures trying to tell me here?
See, page, you said page seventeen, does that look like this?
Like that.
Okay, the appendix. Okay.
It lists the roads and when they're gonna be.
Okay, this, that sheet there, that's the crack ceiling cycle.
Okay.
That's, that's year by year. So all six years here, that's every road in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And so what I'm trying to do with this cycle is divide up all the roads evenly, which is going to be about nineteen miles per year for the crack ceiling cycle.
All right, now what is, what is these numbers, these totals?
That's total mileage per year.
That's mileage?
Yeah, for cracking.
How many miles have we gotten in the city? I'm thinking it was-
One hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen.
That's the city's responsibility.
Yeah, although there's been, maybe a slight adjustment now with the new county road agreement.
Okay.
So you're telling me this, this is the cycle, basically, this PCI summary?
Okay, this is the score.
This is-
Okay, I'm talking about the CI.
Yeah, the cycle, that's, you think of your city.
Yeah, this was in last week's, last week's agenda.
Okay, we've got here-
Yeah, that's, right, uh-huh.
Year one, year two, year three, four, five, six, this is the areas that will be cracked seals in these years, this is the roads.
And then similarly, here they're listing the roads to have a contract on, of either a fog seal, a chip seal, or an overlay, different type of contracted maintenance.
Every, three, four, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, cracked seal will be every year, next to six years, I mean, it rolls over every year.
Is that part of this stuff that I've got here?
Yeah, that's a piece.
Can I get, can I do that?
Okay, I got it here.
You sent the whole package.
I can't find it.
Oh, I sent the whole payment that.
Seven, January.
It was the last, last council meeting we came to.
But I think it was sent out, so, January.
I sent it out about a week ago, and also I include the executive summary in there again, so I just sent the, the whole payment management plan the second time. First time I sent the executive summary, the second time I sent the whole one.
January.
January. See, I have that, that's, that's not the one he's talking about.
No, that's, this, I got back in December.
Just this past week, we all received this.
I have that.
And I did not run off the list of streets, which is a hundred and something pages. This is the eighteen page.
What we're looking at, I received on December the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay. That was the summary, right?
That was the summary for the first council meeting, but on January the eighth, I sent the total plan, which includes the summary as well as all the information that goes behind it.
On January the eighth.
And it has that scheduled in it?
Yeah, all, these are all the appendices, so that's, this would be about a hundred and fifty-page document versus-
Total.
Actually, it's just reports, one of like sixteen papers, so it's a lot of information and dependencies. And I think, yeah, the appendix G is what we're discussing right now, but you guys understand.
These, I would like to look at the hard copy, I did not run off the hundred and twenty-seven pages of specific streets.
Yeah. And we've got a few other hard copies, that, the mayor had one, James and then Frank paper. Or did you?
No, yeah, they, I mean, they all have it.
I don't have it on my, I'm checking it right now.
Which appendix has the roads in year?
A G.
Okay. I'm assuming that would be towards them.
Yeah.
Do you have a page number of the?
Uh, you go to the very bottom, I think it should be the very last page of, the last two.
I know, I've seen it, I'm just trying to-
Well, I'm wondering, I'm saying, I hope that if I've got it, I've got something you showed.
Oh, appendix, yeah.
What's the date?
David, it'd be around page seventeen or eighteen, I would think.
On the eighth.
Now, I was looking at the large, hundred and seventy-two, page five.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Hundred and seventy-two pages, you can dig over to page one-seventy-one, one-seventy-two, is where I read.
Well, I'm gonna need some, in some other form, because my computer won't open that file.
It was a PDF file, Terry, so it should be open by-
I quit, I quit, leave this.
I don't have a PDF file emailed to me.
Can't imagine how you would, you went out to all of us.
Huh?
You went out to all of us, wouldn't distribute to you.
I've got it on my computer, my computer will not open that file.
I got this exactly.
I'm talking about that hundred and some odd page.
Oh, okay.
It just, it didn't come to me in a PDF file. If it did, my computer won't open it.
Okay, we'll send it out to you and watch again.
Okay.
Put it in a PDF.
Please.
It was.
Is, is that a PDF?
Even the rest, so I don't know.
Put it in Word, or I can zip it and compress it, that it can be smaller, but it's a PDF file.
Well, it, it says it's a DAT file on mine, what I got.
Do you have PDF, PDF converters in yours?
No.
Or it's probably, well, that's why, you don't have a program on your computer.
I've got PDF, but it's, it's, it says DAT file.
I'll resend.
All right, thank you.
But that just basically defines the condition of streets by street and area, correct? It scores them, I guess, basically, but?
Yeah, appendix G is the listing of year by year, you know, like the year two, year four, what, what type of maintenance being performed on what street.
Okay. Now, so Wilson, since we're going one by one, any?
I don't know, I'm still trying to find it, it came in that, I'm looking at it, but I still can't find a appendix G.
Your, your screen's blank.
There we go.
I'm good.
Okay. Now, any other questions while we have our expertise here, or if there's gonna be any problems when we bring it to a vote tonight?
Well, I'd like that file reviewed before, I don't even know what it is.
I need a hard copy here, sure. And again, what we're discussing right here is this very last page. So this is the twelve-year plan, year two, year four, year six, of what gets more than just cracked seal, some type of maintenance.
Okay. Now, so Wilson, would you need to look at that with these three?
Yeah, we expect there might be minor adjustments, you know, year ten or year eight, things might change a little bit, but, you know, especially if bids come in boat, perhaps you can get more mileage, you can get a few more streets done. So there'll be slight adjustments needed in the plan, but overall, consider this like a master plan, kind of the long-range, twelve-year goals.
And we would probably use the same format for bid that we did on the last go-around as far as specifications. I guess, have we tightened up a little bit on completion penalties or things of that nature?
We can, we can make it whatever you would, however you would-
Just, just, I don't know, I don't remember the old one, because I wasn't on the council, I just remember the discussion that took place.
Right.
But just making sure that things get completed in a timely manner if we do contract it out somehow. All right. Any need for additional discussions while we've got the expertise here, or do we need to keep the expertise for the main meeting?
I guess I would just say, just as a, for, for the public, when they, when they do ask us, hey, why isn't my street getting, you know, paved this year? Can you, can you just kind of break down for the record what the scoring system is, how you did it, and that way we can articulate how these streets were listed and what order they were listed in? Is that a fair question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the scoring system, it's mostly, it's a visual, you're looking at surface cracks.
Mm-hmm.
There's, there's seventeen different types of cracks that we looked at, and then you rate how bad they are and how many there are, right? You put all this into a bunch of log written formulas, and it spits out a score.
Okay.
Right, we use an app for this.
There's an app for that?
Yeah, there's an app for that, right. Overall, the average score for the city was fifty-nine, so that's kind of getting down to, you know, if anything is above the seventy, I think that'd be, that'd be great for the city. So at a fifty-nine with a ravage, and I think you had, you know, thirty percent were greater than seventy, thirty percent were like fifty to seventy, and then thirty percent were like twenty to fifty, and ten percent of your roads down there were very bottom in the red category, you know, poor, poor in the roads. And the way then, so we kind of went through, scored all the roads, right? Now you, now you can see where your roads are at. So, so those roads that are scoring very well, you know, ones that, when you look them on the map, they're green, right? That's not areas where you need to focus, and so then what I try to do is start focusing on, when we see clusters of the red and the orange streets together, that would make a good contract, because then the contract can work in one area.
In one area.
Right. So I try to find clusters of those that, that, that would form a good contract with the same type of maintenance. And granted, there's needs all over the city, so you're, you're probably gonna be complaining that people wouldn't find road gonna get done. Well, we've got these twelve years programmed, and I'm sure that there's more needs after that, because at this point, we're gonna touch twenty-six miles out of a hundred and fifteen. So there's gonna be people that, that don't get paid, but that's, that's the money we have to work with, I guess, unless, unless you guys find a pot of gold.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have that question, when is, when is my street getting paved?
And this scoring method, you've got in your, this P, PCI score, the lower the number the better, or the higher the number?
It's zero to a hundred, so a hundred's good and, and zero's bad.
Okay, so the lower the number, the worse the road is.
Right, yeah, so if you're looking at some of those maps, again, you know, your green roads are good, those are greater than seventy, and your red roads are bad, those are less than twenty.
So then in year two, it becomes, as far as the bid process, it becomes kind of our job, sort of look at these clusters and say, okay, we wanna bid out this cluster for this type of work. Am I reading you right?
I'd say you stick with the plan, you know, I've got, I've got roads for year two.
Okay, perfect, good.
And obviously, probably whatever, me and Frank go ride those roads and make sure they're in a good shape to, for this type of contract, and then, you know, left contract.
And you feel that, that two hundred thousand is a good, a good, lack of better terms, pot of money for the roads that you've allocated in those various, you know, about the numbers?
Yeah, that's a good steady amount for, for you guys to budget.
Right.
You know, even though it's contracting-wise, it's gonna spike every year.
Of course, sure, of course, and depending on what happens with various prices of commodities and whatnot.
Right.
Okay, cool, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Kenny? Again, are we through with our experts, since they have jobs?
I just wanted it articulated for the video, just so when someone asks me a question, I can, I can refer to the video as far as how the scoring system worked and, and what the plan is, basically.
Sure, we'd be glad to come out and talk with you, yeah, all questions, we'll let you know.
And we've got access when things come up to the expertise, and we've got our own department head-
Right.
-who will be coordinating, so.
And, you know, when it comes time for a pulse check in, you know, three to six months, you know, we can see how the plan's unfolding, see what the costs are looking like, see what the money situations look like, make tweaks accordingly if needed to. But we'll be able to do status updates easily.
How soon is this starting?
Crack sealing has to be done in the winter, when the cracks are the wisest, so within a couple of weeks.
As far as the crack, the crack.
All right, and this is, this is us renting equipment for our workers to do the work, so, buying the equipment is there for us to rent, we'll get started in a few weeks.
So a question for you, Frank, is with this additional workload, you know, you probably didn't have it in your, in your cards as far as stuff you were planning on doing this year, how does this impact your agenda for the year? Your, your projects that you have planned for the, for the remainder of the year? Are you gonna have to not do some things you had planned on doing possibly?
We'll, we'll, we'll get it done.
Okay.
Every day we provide some.
Yeah, I know you do, I know you're fantastic at that, I was just curious on how much that just, the origin, your, your life.
Our plan, that was based on-
How's staying?
I think the plan, all four of them, three, four workers for several weeks, right?
Thank you, Frank.
I see Georgia roads listed in here, so it's fair. Do you see what they've done to it in the last few weeks?
No.
They have gone right down the, the eastbound side, and it dug up the whole eastbound side.
And hopefully-
And it is, it is, I, I came on it all the way here today, it is terrible. Hopefully, we won't leave it like that, but just, you know, that's gonna increase our cost as far as kind of fix it.
Yeah, or if, this is a utility contractor or somebody, so if they repave it-
Ask community, fire.
I mean, if they repave it, then that's one that can come off the list, and we can, we can add another one.
So hopefully, it'll be sorry about those.
Okay, gentlemen, one last time, any additional questions? Okay? I'd like to thank y'all for being here tonight. Remember, we've got Frank, he's our resource, he's here, he knows what he's doing, and he does make things happen, so we, we're, we've got somebody who can help us, and he will be coming back to us in the form of approval of contract once we set up something to go out and bid. Okay? All right? Thank y'all very much, appreciate you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you for taking the time. You need to get your copy back.
Oh, we can leave that one.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, to the second item, Mr. Wilson, I think you added that to the agenda if you would like to.
Basically, we will have a troop with us at our council meeting, just in case any council persons have any questions, but I wanted to include this item on the agenda, mainly for the session. Since we have been working with Iron Beach for a while now, to provide good healthy wellness for our employees, just wanna know what's the feel for continuing the contract, which the contract, which this has been decreased and had from last year, but just want to get a good feel, how you, how's everyone's feel like.
I can't hear you out there.
Yeah, just want to get a good feel of how everybody feel about it.
I think you have some stats on, on some of the Iron Beach usage, or mayor, do you have some stats?
Yeah, the stats, the stats that I saw were not accurate stats. Well, I mean, it depends on how you interpret them. I think this was already discussed at a previous meeting.
During the budget process, I was a strong advocate for getting support from the department heads. We had police and fire here, and they were basically saying that, okay, yeah, one, you know, there might be some sporadic usage by the majority of the ones that are counted on here, but the few that use it on the regular, the preference from the department head is reimbursement.
Right. Yeah, and that has not changed. I checked with them today, just to confirm, because I was remembering back what we, what we did. I think the numbers that were originally presented, the numbers that, that I think you had gotten, were single or potentially single. If I go one time, I'm counted as one person that uses the gym. If you all go, then I count it as five people that use the gym, even though you may only go one time, or you may go every day, and it's still counted as one person. The police department and the fire department told me that they had three each, three policemen, three firemen that regularly used the gym. I think we had two out of this building that somewhat regularly used the gym during that, through this contact. So that's eight people. So, that, that's the number of folks, at best, has been reported from the departments that regularly use the gym. I think you'd be, I'm, I'm in favor of health and wellness, and, you know, encouraging people to exercise. I think you'd be far better off, from a financial standpoint, if you're going to provide that benefit to their employees, to provide it based off their usage of it, rather than just doing a big contract, say, everybody can go, and six people end up going. You're, you're far better off to reimburse them for their membership when you have a limited number of people using it, and that's what we have.
So are you saying this is an inflated number, that she made us?
I'm, no, I'm, I'm, you weren't hearing what I said the first time. I said.
That's why I asked the question.
Oh, yeah. I said, I think that number, I think that number, and I'm always surmising at this point, is a single-use number, meaning, if you go one time this year, you're counted as one in that number. If you go three hundred times this year, you're counted as one in that number. Okay? So, so while you have, whatever the number was, twenty-six or something?
Twenty-six, yeah.
Twenty-six. That means twenty-six, to me, that means twenty-six different people use the gym at least one time during the year. Okay? We know, we know from asking the two departments that seem to be identified as the primary users of it, I checked with both the chiefs today, and both of them told me, independently, both of them told me, they had three members of their employees that used it regularly. So that would be six people. And then I asked the city clerk, how many people out of this building used it regularly during the contact time, and he said, two. So that would be eight people. That's, that's all that we know that use it regularly. So, if you take twenty-six and you subtract eight from it, that leaves you eighteen. That means eighteen other people at least once during the year, or maybe twice, or maybe six times during the year, that didn't use it regularly. That, that's what I'm saying, because that's, that's how I perceive those numbers.
But if you, if you refund or give the, those eight that's going regularly to refund or whatever you want to call it, to pay for their gym membership, how many others are going to come forward and say, well, you're paying them X amount of dollars to go to the gym. I won't pay X amount of dollars, I can do something myself.
Well, I mean, you could have, you could have a hundred of them say that. But that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean anything just because they want it. I mean, if you, you have a program, it's just like you have a health insurance program. There's a health insurance program here for the city. If, if you want it, this is, this is a little check. If you don't want it, then, you know, I mean, I think you all have that in your business. You have other benefits that people may or may not take advantage of, and that's their choice. So I, I'm not, I'm not advocating either way. I'm just saying, if you're, if you're going to do it, there's a more cost-effective way of doing it.
What health and wellness program do we have in place now? I'm, I'm asking you.
Well, I'm referring to the city clerk.
We do not have a health and wellness program in place at the present time. Well, an example, for example, is silver seekers, which is an age-defied process through my insurance. My gym gets reimbursed three dollars every time I go. That's the way that one works. They don't get anything when I don't go, but if I go, they get three dollars.
And, and with the organization I work with, we do have a health and wellness program as well, but gym membership. If they want to participate, they, and want to get reimbursed for it, they go at least three times a week, twelve times a month. They have to, a minimum of twelve times a month. If they do that, they get reimbursed twenty-five dollars for their gym membership. I think the membership down there is twenty dollars a month, I believe.
Twenty-five.
Okay, twenty-five. So twenty-five, same thing. So, so any of my employees where, where, that I'm responsible for at Habitat can go down there for twenty-five dollars a month, go twelve times, and they can turn in that, there are evidence that they did that, they're, they're printout from that. They can turn that in, they can get reimbursed in about a dollar, so it's possibly nothing to do with that. I will tell you, doing that, we probably have less than ten percent that do that, on that basis.
So it'll be more cost-effective. Thank you for the opportunity, that way.
That's right.
So.
Three hundred dollars a year for eight people.
We can change the resolution, make it, um, city employees get reimbursed for gym membership, huh?
I would want the chance to look and see if we are authorized to reimburse employees in that manner. You have to be careful of giving public funds to private benefit. I do think that you can, and if I know that you can enter into a contract with an entity like that, but there may be different ways of skinning that cat. It could be that we enter into a contract with the gym to pay for a certain amount based on actual usage or something like that. But I'm not comfortable here tonight, y'all changing the resolution to reimburse employees.
Well, if that's the case, that's what we're going back to then?
Well, except for this is a flat fee as opposed to paying for, for usage.
Like monthly? I would make sure of that, how much you're going to pay them?
Well, that is, that's what I'm saying. It's an option that we can perhaps look at.
Should we table this one, till you have another chance?
If you wanted to do something other than what has been on the agenda presently, I guess I would table it.
Will that be okay by the gentleman?
I mean, Trudy's still going to, she's still going to be here, so she's going to get facts as far as the numbers that she provided to us. So basically, she will know instead of, go by hearsay of what someone heard.
All right. We'll wait till she gets here and discuss it.
You're moving your head there, Mrs. Spidey. We have, we had numbers that would've been nice to have before the meeting tonight. We probably have this meeting.
My big concern is, yeah, my big, my really only concern is, is what I was trying to do with, with, when we were approving the budget, is that, okay, I think the dollar amount then was eight, eight thousand and some change. Again, I know it's come down a little bit since then, is that as opposed to just applying for just one line item and saying, okay, health and, associated health and wellness, eighty-two hundred bucks, whatever the dollar amount was, figuring out who was using it and how much, and just saying, okay, you know, police department, your cost is, you know, two thousand dollars, figure it out. I don't care if you take it out of tires and tubes, I don't care where you take it from, but it's, it's your viability, you figure it out, you know?
And, and we had asked that question.
Right.
And both of them said, because you all were looking at that lineup, putting the burden on those two departments.
Right.
Because of those numbers, that's where both of them said, we'd rather just pay for them to go, because we know not very many are going.
Right. And that's why I became more of a fan of the reimbursement model personally, because we look at this, this is, this is unbudgeted, and, um, it's obviously, that's, we've done a good job staying in the black. I want to do it and get it in the red three months out. That's why I like the reimbursement model. But I'm curious to see what you have to say. Yeah, follow me.
Trudy has to say it, so.
That's just my only concern.
Whatever is the council's pleasure.
I think about, you know, if we're going to do a, I think about longevity more than I, because I'm, I'm still thinking about the fact that we didn't do anything for longevity. So I think about longevity too. I look about, I think about this, and I'm going, if I was a city associate, which one, you know, would I rather benefit from? So, that's what I'm wrestling with personally.
You gotta stay healthy to get longevity.
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.
So the general consensus is that we would at least table for this meeting and bring that discussion up to the future meeting. Have, we have more facts?
Well, I mean, Trudy's coming here at six-thirty, so I mean, I say we just say we're going to, we're going to talk about the, you know.
Let's get the information and then decide what to do, or table it if you have to.
If you leave it on the agenda for the moment, then that will at least not make you start over with a first reading, since it's unbudgeted, no next time. You can discuss it, and then you can say, okay, we will, but then if it changes, then it will have to start over. So.
So please, if there's anything that require a discussion, please ask it, ask them to be at pre-council, which is where we need to have the discussion, so we can do business in the main council meeting. That's the reason for having the pre-council an hour now, so we don't have work sessions. But thank you. Is there anything else for tonight? Is there a motion that we adjourn pre-council?
Make the motion to adjourn pre-council.
Do I have a second on it? Excuse me, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll read the meeting at six-thirty for the council meeting.
Somebody really great up the heat, this is getting a little ridiculous.
Basically, call the meeting tomorrow. Good evening, Council Spidey.
Present.
Council Bearden.
Here.
Council Wilson, and myself, present. Thank you. And with someone like to venture out with the minutes.
Make a motion that we just spent with the reading of the minutes, since each member of the council has received the copy, and that the minutes for January the second, 2019, will be approved or submitted.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we won't know if one person calls everybody at the meeting. All right, thank you. Motion carries. For the chair, Council Spidey?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents.
Do I have a second, second on that motion? Okay, thank you, Council Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Do we have any professional consultant reports coming in? All right. And mayor, at this point, it's your time. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I want to remind you of just one date coming up, the twenty-ninth of January this month, at six o'clock here in this room, we'll have our next town hall meeting. I invite all the council members to be here, so that you can respond to folks that have questions for you. But essentially, it's, it's a time for me to take your questions, have you an update about the city, what's going on, and answering the questions if you may have. So we'll have our staff, most of our department heads will be here, hopefully the counselors will be here as well, and we'll be able to, to discuss any, any topics of concern that you may have, and items of importance to the city. So that's the twenty-ninth of this month, at six PM here in this room. I don't have any other report ready tonight, but I do have a presentation. I'll give this back right now. We have Meg Lovett here with us from Junior League of Birmingham, if you will come forward. I want to read a portion of this proclamation and present you with the proclamation. Meg is a volunteer with Junior League of Birmingham, is representing this issue. This should be important to all of us, I think, probably, the microphone shut off. Sometimes we don't, we don't, obviously don't recognize it, don't see it, but it's a very real, very important issue that faces our community, not just our community here in Iredale, but this thing is going to do it the whole time. Okay, that's better anyway. And this is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, that's a proclamation to that effect. Whereas human trafficking is a very real problem facing our world today, and whereas due to its secretive and illegal nature, it's difficult to accurately quantify the extent of human trafficking. Whereas the first step in eliminating, eliminating human trafficking is to educate others. Whereas we ask all the residents of this community to join us in raising the visibility of this crime, whose victims are all too often invisible. Now therefore, I Charles Moore, Mayor of the City of Iredale, do hereby declare January two thousand nineteen as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Iredale, Alabama. And we have this proclamation for you to take back with you, Meg. We thank you for being here. I want to give one story, if I could. I wish the chief was here. We actually, our police department solved one case of this about, a little over a year ago, about a year and a half ago, where someone was involved and caught up in, in human trafficking, and actually they ended up arresting the people over in Homewood. But it started here in Iredale, from out of state, a young lady that had been forced into this. The chief and I, in my office, even got the father on the phone and talked to the father who lived in Virginia, who was concerned, and then made a phone call down here, just knowing not where his daughter was, but knew that she was somewhere in the area. And through that good police work, they were able to capture and solve that problem. So, so it touches us, it touches our community, and we need to be aware of it, and we need to have a positive impact on it. Did you have anything you'd like to share?
Um, just, the Junior League of Birmingham, you know, we're working to tackle this issue. It's our second year working with it. Interstate twenty has actually been dubbed the sex trafficking superhighway between Birmingham and Atlanta, and Iredale's right here in the middle of it. January thirtieth, if anyone wants to learn more about what you can do, one of these is bringing awareness to it. January thirtieth, at the Junior League Building in Birmingham, Freedom Public will actually be having a community roundtable with Carolyn Pyer from the Wellhouse, as well as Aleah, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, and some folks from the University of Alabama who are studying this issue here in Alabama.
Thank you so, thank you very much for being with us. And I come to a lot of these types of things in my other work and all, so you do not have to endure the city council meeting if you choose to leave. We certainly understand that. Not that it's a great thing, I mean, it's wonderful, but.
Great, thank you, mayor. And I don't believe we have any department head reports tonight. All right, thank you. And we'll start with our standing committees or special committees. I don't see anybody there, so we'll go directly to council. Council Spidey?
Yes, sir. One report. The new principal of Iredale Middle School will be speaking at the Exchange Club meeting, January twenty-second, at five-thirty. The speaker is Barry Bynington? I hope I'm saying that correctly. I'm trying to clear.
Bynington.
Bynington, okay. So, they'll be speaking at the Exchange Club, five-thirty. I know they normally meet at the, the space over by the Habitat for Humanity Building. So John Schoen is the contact for that, and I have some information, contact information, in their most recent newsletter up here, if anybody would like to come check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Bearden?
Thank you. I went to Dicky Drake's swearing-in program a week ago Sunday, saw a couple of council members there, the mayor. I talked to Dicky, and he said that he had a twenty-five-hundred-dollar check for the library that he'd be presenting soon to, for our library, and had additional money for our kids' baseball program, that he'd be bringing to us later in the winter or early spring. He didn't have a definite amount at that time, but said he'd be bringing that soon also. And that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Council Wilson?
I have no report, but I do have a statement. We've had, of course, an influx of leaves that's been given to our sewer system around Holiday Gardens, so I noticed that some of the residents haven't been begging their leaves. So basically, mayor, if you don't mind, I'll send you some information as far as seeing if we can go around and seeing what we can do about that. That's all I have.
Well, just, just for the record, at the last meeting, we did discuss that there will be an upcoming proposal to purchase a leaf truck, which we need to do in order to pick that process back up, but that should be coming to us in the near future.
Yeah, and I'll just respond real quickly to that. We, I, I think that's something that would benefit the residents, and we'll talk about the leaf truck down the road. But in terms of what can be done about, we'll get the information out again, the bag of the leaves on the, on the website, but you all need to communicate that in your districts. So if you're seeing it, you need to, people are raking their leaves in there, knock on the door, tell them, you know, that they have to be back. So you all can help out in your, your neighborhoods as well. But we'll try to get that information out.
All right, thank you, sir. Do you have any reports of boards and non-council committees? I do not see tell us here tonight. At the most recent meeting, the mayor did give an update on the state of the city, very well attended. Even though it was a last-minute scramble for a location, but it worked out well, and this will be some of what you will hear in the town hall meeting that's coming up. So please be sure to attend. You'll have an option there, more time to ask questions, because the time at a chamber meeting is somewhat limited, so it cuts off. meeting is somewhat limited, so it cuts off the employee. Um, okay, anybody like to venture out on the agenda tonight?
I'd like a motion that the agenda be, uh, approved or submitted.
Do I have a second on that motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. And now we are ready for any public comments on agenda items only. Uh, please remember to hand the clerk the information, so he'll have it for the record from the sheets in the back, and, uh, your limit is three minutes, if there's anything on agenda items only. All right, no comments on agenda tonight, okay. And we'll go right to unfinished business, Council Spidey?
Yes, sir, I make a motion that Resolution twenty nineteen R-oh-one allocates funding for the pavement management plan from the four and five cent gas tax fund, um, for two hundred thousand dollars.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Council Wilson? Well, we, that would've come during open comments, I would assume, on the agenda items.
Yeah, public comments, yeah, um, I should've mentioned to her...
Is she?
Yes, she is. Um, before we read item number, uh, one under new business, uh, basically, I wanted to, um, Trudy, there were some questions in reference to the number, uh, on the proposal that was submitted to, uh, the councilors. Uh, from my understanding, based on what I heard, uh, the numbers were inaccurate. Uh, could you kind of elaborate on some of the, uh, memberships as far as the employees that come into, come into the...
On those numbers you asked for us to go back...
Come up to the mic, you, please.
On those numbers you asked for us to go back, um, eight to ten months, and that's what we did, and it was broke down on the fire department, those were the firefighters who were either in our gym, or they were contacted, that said that they were interested in continuing to come, some of them were new, so they haven't even signed the lease forms yet, the new girl has come in that just started, so that's where those, and then the police officers are the ones that have used it, that were asked, were they interested in still continuing? So that's where those numbers come from. So the majority of the firefighters were actually in the gym as they come through, and we were adding them to our list to see if they were still gonna be, um, with the city and coming in. Now, to tell you that they will make it every month, firefighters, they make it when they can, that's why they have twenty-four-seven access, but that's, that's the ones that are on that list, 'cause there are others that have come and gone, that we could've added in, that had come in in the eight, last eight or ten months, but they're either not, uh, employed anymore in the city, or, uh, when we did see them, they have moved on, or they're not gonna come. Those are the ones, Tracy, like, we, you know, we talked with all of them, and they were, yes, may not have been in the last three months, but I am planning on coming back if this is renewed. So those numbers were correct. Like I said, there's some we could've added in that have come, but they're, we did not, they either are not, no longer employed, or we spoke with them, they know that, um, they're probably in another facility, they're just not gonna use it anymore.
Okay.
How many are coming on a regular basis, like, monthly or weekly or so forth?
Uh, the majority of theirs are really gonna be your firefighters and your police officers.
Which are regularly? Which are regularly?
Oh, your regular ones, yes.
Okay.
Um, firefighters, I mean, if you wanna, if you're asking me what I've seen in the last, let's go back two months, maybe what, fifteen, that have actually physically been in our gym in the last two months, firefighters, police officers, those are the, um...
Are there any coming in weekly, or, or once or twice a month, or...
Well, whether you're firefighters, they're gonna try to come weekly, but they come in, sometimes they make it a call, and they're five minutes gone, and then they can maybe try to come back later on. Um, they work with their shifts, so it depends on their shifts. Um, there are several that average. To tell you, you know, are they all gonna be here this month and the next month, it may be, if they're doing a lot of training and stuff, they may hit us maybe once a week. If it's a slow week for them, they may be in there two or three times a week. I can't sit here and tell you they're there three days a week at five o'clock, um, because it's based on their schedules. Now, your sanitation, the ones that come that work in, uh, street and sanitation and all those, you set your clock by some of them, they're there three, four days a week at four o'clock, three o'clock, or whatever time that they're getting on. Which is the reduction to, you know, we gave the reduction, uh, this time, 'cause we based it on, uh, twenty-six memberships basically is being purchased, um, offered to every employee of the city, plus their spouses, plus their children. Um, I don't know if we include it in there, if we include it all...
Trudy, I don't mean to cut you short, but we normally do a lot, three minutes, so we've gone past that point. But, uh, the list we're referring to is the one we saw at the budgeting process time, I guess?
No, this isn't, she just said it right here, there's no interaction.
I think, I think we need to, uh, do away with the three minutes here, 'cause we need information, not three minutes worth of, that you can give us.
Okay, you were making an exception, uh, do we need additional information?
Well, I, you know, she's saying there's fifteen that's coming on a regular basis.
Right.
Right, what we heard was there were nine coming on a regular basis.
That's based on the polls that were taken by your department heads in their department, and they didn't say, they said regular basis, okay?
Regular basis, which would be several times a week, and you have your others that come, they may make it this week, they may not make it next week, um, I said it's based on their schedules, and...
So you've got, you've got fifteen that's coming weekly, or at least once or twice a month, and then you've got another ten that comes sporadically?
If you, I mean, if, when they're questioning, you probably, you probably have your ten dedicated, they're gonna be there every opportunity they have. You have your others that are gonna be there when they can visit into their schedules, and they can come in. And that, that was us talking directly to the firefighters, that was in our own facility talking to the firefighters, do you even want to even, you know, try to continue this? And then the officers that come in after hours, couple of them we didn't catch, 'cause they're in there at night, we didn't catch them.
Okay. Again, the key to the discussion was, it's an unbudgeted item, do we do some more additional research on it to see if we are better off trying to negotiate something that incentivizes the employees, if it's possible, and reimburse on that basis, or is it better to pay a lump sum and assume a certain number of people are using it?
How much was the contract last year?
Last year?
You said it was, it was reduced, so how much were we...
Um, year to year or the monthly?
Um, yearly, and...
Yearly was fourteen-nine, and we reduced it to seven thousand...
Seven-five.
Seven-five, yeah.
Okay. Counsel?
I think we got all the information, I mean, it's either up or down, so, I mean, I know it's unbudgeted, but we were just talking about seventy-five hundred dollars, so, for health and wellness.
Council Bearden, did you have any additional questions?
I'd like to digest this information and ponder over it a little bit.
Okay, that's a comment, not a question, so...
That's a comment, that's a comment.
We've been talking about it forever, so...
No additional questions from the council?
But also keep in mind the personal training that we had done with some, um, you know, it wasn't more than just you buying a gym membership, we, we offered a service, so we did personal training, we worked with, with children of some of your employees with, you know, special needs, so it was, when you're considering it, and I would like for our community to know, it's not, we're not just talking about purchasing a gym membership and people just being able to walk in and use a piece of equipment, we offered a complete service, they had personal trainers, they had nutritionists they could talk to, they had, um, we did some P.T.'s, uh, with some of your employees that had surgeries, you know, we carried on with their physical therapy, working with their physical therapist. So at least consider not just a gym membership, but the service that went along behind it.
Thank you, and I would like to add on to that, we had an external fitness program that we put on at Beacon Park, uh, that Iron Beach, you know, kinda did a very good, it was, it was a very good program, it was Iron Beach Fitness. Do you feel you're well informed at this point?
How much of the individual or family membership, if someone wanted to do it on their own?
If anybody just came out of the street, an individual person is twenty-five dollars, and then a family, depending on how many is in the family, can be anywhere from forty-five to fifty, fifty-five.
That's per month?
Per month.
The physical therapy and things that you offer, the, the, um, added, added benefits there, um, is that stuff, um, that you would do for a client who had a general, general membership to your gym? I mean, do you do that kind of work?
For them, regardless of the type that we did with them, it would be an additional fee.
What would that look like?
Anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
So I think with one of them that we worked with, I believe we worked with her two or three days a week with her knee, and that would've probably been a hundred and eighty to two hundred dollar a month, uh, therapy that we just brought her in as a city employee and, and helped her with that.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, thank you, Trudy, appreciate it. Okay, it's out there, it hasn't been put on the floor at this point, so...
I make a motion that Resolution twenty nineteen R-oh-three be approved.
Do we need to do this as an ordinance, since it's an unbudgeted item?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
You need to at least get, or give unanimous consent to carry that.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Make a motion that ordinance, that Resolution number twenty-one, twenty nineteen R-oh-three be considered read.
Second. Do I have a second on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I like a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration, let me find that thing.
Do I have a motion that we suspend all rules that would be prevented or be considered ordinance?
Second.
Second, okay. Council Spidey?
Yes.
Council Bearden?
No.
At point?
No.
The decision's, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm, I'm, yes. Yes, I'm sure, yes.
Sure? Yes.
Yes, at this point. Okay, will it pick back up?
Did you vote no?
No.
Okay, all right, make a motion that all, that, uh, Resolution twenty nineteen R-oh-three be finally passed as ever to introduce.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, those in favor?
No.
We'll call them and do it again. Spidey?
No.
Council Bearden?
No.
Yes.
Myself, no.
So this comes up again in two weeks, and I will be, don't come up and do it all. So, but it can't be re-presented, because Les is gonna take a look at the reimbursement piece, and it can be reread as a first reading.
It would just be a new...
No, I understand you, yeah.
Yeah, it's the new ordinance, at that time, we have decided not to, we're just gonna look at a different...
Just a different method.
...renegotiate, okay.
At this point, all right. So with that being said, do we have any general public comments tonight? If not, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Make a motion.
Okay, I think we got one guy there that has a second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, thank you so very much, appreciate everyone coming tonight, thank you.